For Douglas County, Nebraska for this day, Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. First order of business is our Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahey, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan is absent, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five, B being called for a meeting and set Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions under equalization, which are items C through I, which we can take in block plus adjournment if desired. Motion by Rogers, second by Friend to approve C through I plus adjournment. But first discussion, was there anybody from the public that wanted to comment on any of the resolutions in equalization? C through I. If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. That concludes equalization. We're going to jump into Douglas County Board of Commissioners' agenda. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahey, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan is absent, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items, uh, excuse me, one A and B, A being the approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five, B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, items A through J minus D, which is taken off the docket for today. Do I have a motion, a second for discussion for these items? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend for consent agenda. Comments or questions on consent? Seeing none? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our recognitions and proclamations. First is item five A, a recognition of the following county employee who is retiring. We have Matthew McAdes, who worked for Douglas County Corrections for twenty years. I don't believe Matthew is here today, is he? No. So, we want to thank Matthew for his dedication to the citizens of Douglas County for his twenty years of work at Douglas County Corrections. I'll take a motion, a second for that resolution. Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And next, we have a recognition of the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Omaha Bar Association. For this one, I will toss it to my colleague, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is our pleasure to recognize one of the oldest civic organizations in Douglas County, the Omaha Bar Association. And I believe the executive director, Mr. Summers, come on down, is here as well. I'd like to read this resolution, and then we can talk a little bit about the things that we're doing to commemorate this. Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, resolved, whereas on August tenth, eighteen seventy-five, six attorneys met in the Douglas County Courthouse and established the Douglas County Bar Association as the Organization for Attorneys Practicing in Douglas County, Nebraska, with thirty-four local attorneys joining as founding members. And whereas, the founding purpose of the Douglas County Bar Association was to maintain the honor and dignity of the profession of the law, to cultivate social intercourse among its members, and to increase its usefulness in promoting the due administration of justice. And whereas, the Douglas County Bar Association recognized, reorganized as the Omaha Bar Association in eighteen eighty-eight, continuing its commitment to legal profession and the public good. And whereas, throughout its history, the Omaha Bar Association has remained steadfast in its commitment to the legal profession and the public good, with contributions including promoting access to justice through legal services for the indigent, advancing legal education, offering lawyer referral services, publishing legal resources, and upholding the rule of law as the foundation of our legal system. And whereas, the membership of the Omaha Bar Association has shown a dedication to serving the people of Douglas County through legal representation, public service, and community leadership. And whereas, the Omaha Bar Association has committed itself over its hundred and fifty years to building and maintaining the positive bonds of support and professionalism amongst the legal community in Douglas County, Nebraska. And whereas, the Omaha Bar Association is celebrating its one hundred and fiftieth anniversary in twenty twenty-five, and is placing a commemorative plaque of its history on display in the rotunda of the Douglas County Courthouse. Now, therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners that it hereby recognizes and congratulates the Omaha Bar Association and its members on its sesquicentennial, and expresses its sincere appreciation to the Omaha Bar legal, to the Omaha legal profession for the work that they do for the citizens of Douglas County, dated this fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-five. And I would move to adopt this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Fahey. We'll enter into some dialogue. Hello, good morning.
Hello. Good morning. Dave Summers, Omaha Bar Association Executive Director. Here's the plaque. We are unveiling it on Friday. I'm taking it upstairs to get it to the people that need to install it, but it's going to be in the rotunda next to the elevators. And we are just so thankful to the Commission for the proclamation, for all your help in organizing a special event. A hundred and fifty years ago, Andrew Poppleton, our second mayor of Omaha, established the Omaha Bar Association. And we call this facility our home away from our office, away from our law firms. And so, it means a lot that we're able to have this plaque, have this event, and proclamation. Thank you.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you for being here. We look forward to celebrating with you. All right, with that, we'll take the official vote. Oh, did you have more, Commissioner Governor?
Don't go away quite yet.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we do this before the vote?
If you have further comment, go ahead.
Okay. Could you just quickly read the plaque for us so that we have it in the record?
Sure. It's somewhat similar to the proclamation. I'll be quick about it. On August tenth, eighteen seventy-five, six attorneys convened at the Douglas County Courthouse to establish the Douglas County Bar Association. Membership was limited to lawyers in good standing who resided in poor practice within Douglas County. That inaugural year welcomed thirty-four members and with Andrew J. Poppleton elected as president and B.E.B. Kennedy as vice president. The founding purpose of the association was to maintain the honor and dignity of their profession of law, to cultivate social intercourse among its members, and to increase its usefulness in promoting the due administration of justice. By eighteen eighty-eight, with the membership of a hundred and six attorneys, the association formally adopted the name Omaha Bar Association, a name it continues to carry with pride to this day. Throughout its history, the Omaha Bar Association has remained steadfast in its commitment to the legal profession and to the public good. Its enduring contributions include promoting access to justice through legal services for the indigent, advancing legal education, offering lawyer parole services, publishing legal resources, and upholding the rule of law as the foundation of our legal system.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to note for our visitors from abroad that this is a celebration of an association of attorneys who help us in the administration of law. We pride ourselves on our legal system. It's one of the strengths of America. It's survived wars and depressions and pandemics. And it does that in large part because we all take an interest in it, lawyers and non-lawyers alike. It's the backbone of what you see before you and how our government works. We're glad to have you here and share this with you. It's a big, big occasion when a hundred and fifty years goes by. In a young place like Nebraska, that's a long time, maybe not back home. But we're just delighted to have it. And Mr. Summers, thank you very much for the great work you do. I know because I participated in legal education through the bar and a lot of other services that the bar offers. And I know that my colleague here, Mr. Fahey, does as well. We're just delighted to play a small part in this great celebration. Thank you.
We'd love to have Omaha Bar Association members in city council, on the Commission, in leadership across the board. And I think it speaks to the profession and also the good works that everyone does here. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right. That concludes recognitions and proclamations. We're going to go to presentations now, of which we have two. I'm going to go ahead and flip these real quick, just so in case our guests have to leave anytime soon. We're going to go ahead and do item B first, and then we'll get to item A. B is the UNO YCLE delegation for the fall twenty twenty-five, so we will invite them up.
Good morning. Val McPherson, sixty-four fifteen Glenwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. It has been my distinct honor to have brought the Douglas County Commissioners, international visitors for the U.S. Department of State for the last twenty-three years. It has been my distinct pleasure to have brought you international visitors through their YCLE program, Young Southeast Leaders Initiative. And for the last eleven years, I think I have probably been saying, at least starting with the second YCLE delegation, how impressed I am with each delegation and how I noticed that surprisingly enough, perhaps, that every delegation is more impressive than the last. And this program has reached the point where I didn't think it could get much more impressive. But I know that many of you have read their bios, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. You have before you a very impressive group of young leaders truly representing the best and the brightest of their nine Southeast Asian countries. As I have said before, their selection process was similar to how the State Department has been selecting international leaders since just before World War II. And those alumni, in more than a thousand cases, have gone on to be either president or prime minister of their countries. And yes, I have pretty high confidence that you just might have a future prime minister or president of Southeast Asia sitting before you today. I would also like to thank Commissioner Garcia for having taken some time out this morning to meet with this delegation and to welcome them to Omaha. I would also like to introduce two of my colleagues from UNO. I would like to introduce the director of the program, Jody. I was going to say please stand, but you are. And I would like to introduce one of our student ambassadors. We have three student ambassadors that are currently working with this delegation, and their contribution is absolutely invaluable to the program. And I do not know what we would do without our student ambassadors. So, Kayla, thank you. Jody, it's a pleasure to work with you. I would now like the YCLES to please come up and say a few words about themselves.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Leo Wong. I'm from Malaysia. I am passionate about advancing economic mobility for underrepresented communities and minorities in Malaysia through science, technology, and engineering jobs in the country. My experience includes having worked as a product engineer in Texas Instruments back in Malaysia, where I was in charge of quality insurance, which included ensuring that the semiconductors delivered to our clients were at the utmost quality in a sense that they were reliable and also working for the clients. These clients included Ford, Honda, Toyota, and also Apple. And thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, good morning, everyone. My name is Edward Robert. I'm from Jakarta, Indonesia. I'm here as a lawyer, entrepreneur, and also YCLE participant. When I was four years old, my brother and I played a small game. We had to choose our dream countries. He chose Germany, I chose United States. And we hung the flag every day in our room, knowing that every single day we wake up, we had the dream to chase. And today, I'm standing here in Omaha. Even yesterday, I'm celebrating my birthday, and feels like the American dream is really real for me. I always believed that if something doesn't exist, I have to create it. I built three platforms, one to help young people engage in politics, one to develop football literacy through football science, one to support law students in starting their careers. When I couldn't afford a tailor match shirt, I built a business that now employs a local tailor. After being rejected by a hundred law firms, I created my own. Here in Omaha, I've seen what genuine participation looked like, people showing up not just to speak, but to listen, to serve, and to build together. It reminds me that the purpose is not always about being seen, but also making others feel seen. That is the value I hope to carry back home to Indonesia. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and happy birthday.
Good morning, everyone. It's truly an honor to be here to speak in front of you. And let me introduce myself. My name is Nahvati Tiludoni, and I'm from Indonesia. And let me quote this one, "Being consciously aware of the ever-developing stages that society must go through is the first step to becoming a mature society." This is what I am contemplating about during my volunteering journey in one of the national community in my country. And at the same time, I live in the province where we are living under the constant poverty. And I can see clearly that there's a huge gap between the people who live in my province and the people who live outside my province, especially those who are from the Java Island, in utilizing digital technology in their daily basis and in their productivity activities. And I came here, which by meant, I chose America in the very first place by applying through YCLE AFP, and afterwards being chosen by the University of Nebraska at Omaha to learn from and to experience how the local society and the local government create a safe and also cooperative digital system for helping the locals and also the society in the daily basis. So, thank you so much for this incredible opportunity. And I'm looking forward to many more local communities, activities that I can be involved in. And once again, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Good morning, everyone. I'm a little bit nervous now. So, Chumriyutsu, and my name is Ravichany, and people call me Pikun. I was raised and born in Cambodia, a very beautiful land rich in history, culture, and traditions. But sometime, I found out that the traditions is, you know, tighten our opportunity of the women and their woman power in their education. And since I was born, I always hear the social norm is that men's are gold and women's are white pepper. And it's that when they get dirty, they no longer wash or erase. And also, we never get asked if they can become the hero like the boys. So, I am here to prove that women can also be a hero. And I am standing here in front of, as a proof that I flew away from home like more than ten thousand kilometers, and stand here, study computer science, engineering, and working in the STEM sector like men. So, the hero here, I mean you be the hero that own for yourself. And if men can do, women can do too. And luckily, I got the opportunity to learn to thrive and to be myself. So, I want to make sure that all the youth and girl in the next generations have all the chance to learn and thrive like me too. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chumriyutsu, Neta Okniri Minwot Minatini. Hello, everyone. My name is Alisa. I'm from Cambodia, and I am a Fresh International Relations graduate, deeply passionate in diplomacy and youth engagement. What truly matters to me is the ability to be able to engage with everyone and to make every voice matters. And my deep passion in debate, especially in policy debate, allows me to engage with everyone critically, especially about social issues in inclusive education, women empowerment, and youth engagement in our community. And I believe that civic engagement is not just about participation, but it's more about advocacy, taking responsibility, and creating a space where every voice matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Assalamualaikum. Good morning, everyone. My name is Noor Zukrina Amirah Binti Awang Merzuki from Brunei Darussalam. I graduated last year from a bachelor's degree in food science and technology, currently working as a quality assurance assistant at a pharmaceutical company, as well as a research and strategy associate at the Young Seekers Brunei. My civic interest lies in empowering underprivileged youth from rural areas through career guidance and empowerment by creating equal access to opportunities, knowledge, and networks for their personal and professional growth. I believe that by investing in these young people, we are investing in the long-term growth and inclusivity of our nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Sawadee kha. Good morning, everyone. My name is Pichya Da Amara Latana, and I'm from Thailand. So, during my law school, I've had the opportunity to serve as an organizer for several international conferences, including those held by the Labor Law Research Network and the Asian Society of Labor Law, both of which aim to advance for fair and inclusive law system worldwide. So, my core belief is that we must build a legal system with everyone, not just for them. It's truly an honor to be here and join this chamber today. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, sawadee kha. Hello, everyone. My name is Natapon Tepano from Thailand. Understanding intersectionality, how different form of operation overlapping together has shaped my work and purpose. As a member of an LGBTQ community, it's not, my perspective goes beyond queerness alone. It's about realizing how race, gender, class, and other identity combined to shape our life experience. I started my first job as a journalist at Thai Public Broadcasting Service, addressing social issue in Thailand. Now, I promote women's and queer voices through literature in a creative market at an independent publishing. I also found Gender Review Thailand, a digital platform, talking about exploring gender inequality. And I remain committing to create inclusive environment, both offline and online, when every voice was heard, valued, and celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sawadee kha. Good morning. My name is Skeet Ishwari Pong from Thailand. I'm currently a YCLE academic fellow at University of Nebraska at Omaha. Growing up in a provincial area, I witnessed how young people like myself had limited access to information about education and career opportunities. When I tried to pursue a path that didn't fit my community expectations, I found that there was no one to guide me and how to prepare or where to begin. These experiences inspire my civic interest in promoting youth employment and expanding access to career choices and opportunities, especially for those from underprivileged backgrounds. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vi, and I come from Vietnam. I was born and raised in the central regions of the country, when the people are the most vulnerable to natural disaster and poverty, but yet also the most determined when it comes to education. I moved to the biggest city in my country just to pursue a higher education and fireplace and opportunity, when I can seek the opportunities to support the people that I've always wanted to serve. I was honored to name the community change-maker in my community, and I served the offense and children with disabilities in my own hometowns, using the psychology-based activity to have them theirs, to have to improve their social engagement and emotional well-being. Over the years, spending time in summer with them, I've always think about how would this beautiful mind grow up and to become young women. So, that question has brought me here today, standing here with my YCLE fellows, and to talk about the women voices, to empower young women, and to inspire girls in my community to be confident, to love themselves, and to take lead. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Xin chao. Good morning, everyone. My name is Chum. I'm from Vietnam. I'm currently working as both an English teacher and an HR officer. Through my experience teaching high school students, I saw firsthand how their potential is often restricted and squandered by rigid gender stereotypes. This is the challenge I'm committed to solving. So, I'm here to absorb best practices in gender and sexuality from this program's experts and fellows. I will use this knowledge to scale a new inclusive initiative and unlock every student's full potential in my community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
My name is Muhammad Trahan Ramadan Tatraman from Indonesia, and I'm a medical doctor and clinical researcher with a strong passion in civic welfare and healthcare system improvement, especially in maternal and child's health. As a clinician, experienced firsthand disparities that happening back home, so I'm really driven by the belief that meaningful change in healthcare system requires requires not only scientific advancement, but also active collaborations between communities, professionals, and policymakers. Something that I believe the USA has so much to learn about. And it's truly an honor for me to stand before you and to have the opportunity to learn about how many remarkable aspects of the city of Omaha, a city shaped and led by such distinguished and dedicated individuals as yourselves. So, thank you so much and good day, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good morning. Tawan, Salamat Bagi, and Vanakam. I'm Leung Man Kit from Singapore, a multiracial and religious society. I'm a final year student at Singapore Management University, pursuing Bachelor's of Business Management. I've been serving in the grassroots leader since 2018. Over the years, I've led more than 100 community initiative for migrant workers, lower-income families, youth engagement, seniors, and sustainability, just to name a few. I enjoy serving the community. Underfit of hard work and challenges, through every valuable experience and opportunities given to me, I maximize them. I aspire to be a changemaker, driving crazy ideas for social good. My dream is to make a positive impact to the people around me through new initiative and ideas. I wish to make the lives of people better and to have a long-lasting legacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roberto Peregrino De Castro Andrade and I'm from Timor-Leste. I graduated from my university with a degree in international relations. I became very interested in international relations when I participated in Model United Nations Conference. It's an academic simulation. We learn how to solve world issues in a conference. And I became very interested in civic engagement because I see a lot of civic issues in my country, in my community. Therefore, I was involved in many, many youth organizations. And I also have, I also like to contribute and to make positive changes in my community. I'm very grateful to be part of the YSL fellowship program and I'm also very grateful to be here, here in city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Xin chao. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Le Yu Tang, or you can call me Tori in English. I'm coming from Vietnam, a very beautiful country in Southeast Asia. I grew up believing that change can start by small action. And that's why I decided to dedicate my whole life, my whole journey, to empowering youth, protecting our environment, and shifting the local mindset towards sustainability. For me, leadership is not a title. It's a choice. A choice to act, to care, and to inspire the others to follow what we do. Standing here at Omaha City Council reminds me that civic leadership always starts with listening, learning, and leading by example. And that's what I do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Assalamualaikum, Sugeng Injang, and good morning. I'm Fazal Yani Sharifa. I'm from Indonesia. I was born and raised in the small cities in central Java. And I always believe when we teach children to read, it will open a world for them and they might end up writing one of their own. And I've published over 20 books ever since I was 16. And this grows, become my civic interest within the children literacy and inclusive education, using book publishing and storytelling as tools to support education, access for street children, undocumented immigrant children, and children with special needs in Indonesia and Malaysia. Therefore, in 2021, my team and I have created a literacy community and also a learning center for immigrant children to provide a free education access for them who are denied for public school in Malaysia. So, by joining YSL, it really opens a new door for me to learn how to maintain and sustain the nonprofit organization. So, I would like to thank you so much for the YSL committee for trusting me and choosing me. And thank you so much for the opportunity to stand here for today. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Om Soas Yes To. Good morning, honorable city councils and Omaha citizens. I am Dinda. I'm from Indonesia, particularly from a beautiful island called Bali. I am a psychology graduate and currently working as a youth consultant in a nonprofit organization to mainstream inclusive education, targeting over 500 schools in Indonesia. During my time here, I learned invaluable lessons in advocating civic rights from University of Nebraska at Omaha and diverse civic centers here in Omaha. So, I would like to thank my professors, student ambassadors, and also Omaha City Councils for me to have this opportunity. I believe that education has a transformative power in changing a person's life. Therefore, I believe no child should be left behind in education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mabuhai from the Philippines. I am Margaret Mary Deasis, a registered psychometrician, currently serving as a mental health worker and a development and the program officer for Negras Anan Young Leaders Institute, a local nonprofit organization in my province. My civic interest lies in mental health and child development. Through our community-based health and well-being programs, I have the privilege of working closely with young people to nurture, care, and hope in their communities. Together, we strive to build a gentler and kinder world where no child is left behind in development. I am deeply honored to represent my country, the Philippines, my province, Negras Occidental, and my city, Bacolod. Thank you for this opportunity to share this space with you all and to learn from you all today.
Thank you so much.
Hi and good morning. I'm Andre Villanueva from the Philippines. So, I've been actively involved in various nonprofits and social mobility organizations, specifically in Manila City, the capital of the Philippines. So, throughout, and I've done all of that throughout my high school and undergrad with years. I led initiatives specifically on the sectors of community volunteerism and educational technology. Currently, I'm actually working to advance quantum computing education in the Philippines by promoting awareness through national workshops and fostering opportunities for students and educators in the new space. After my trip here in the US, I'm excited to share what I learned here to my country and I really appreciate the opportunity in being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Magandang umaga, or good morning, from the Philippines. I am Jason from Southern Philippines and my background is in sociology. Researchers says that there is a democratic backsliding that is happening globally, which is why I involve myself in strengthening democracy in Southern Philippines by working closely with the parliament for policy advocacy and with the political parties for promoting inclusive governance. I also believe that democracy is best because it puts people at the center of the process. It allows people to experience the best because it will always deliver the best for them. And I am grateful to be here. I would like to thank the American people for investing in our leadership development program here. Please know that this program has a valuable impact in our country. And please know as well that once we go back to our respective nations, we're going to pay it forward. We hope to welcome you in our country soon. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable commissioners, very good morning. I am Brian Anat Wilson. I am from Surawak, which is a state in Malaysia. I'm currently in my final year taking petroleum engineering at University Technology Petronas. Okay, so, growing up in rural Surawak, I've seen that how communities, especially in the long houses, which is our traditional home, rely on unity and shared strength to overcome challenges. So, as an Iban myself, which is indigenous people in Surawak, I feel a deep responsibility to give back, which is to empower the youth, the young people back in rural areas to take part in shaping their communities through educations, through leadership, and through innovations to bring progress back home. So, that is why my passion is to empower them. And because I believe that when young people or young person find purpose, an entire community can rise. So, it's an honor to be here today. I feel like, and I hope that this kind of experience could inspire us young leaders here to dream bigger and live with purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dader Diak Baita Oto, or good morning for everyone. It's truly honor for me to be here. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Lizia Martina Gomez and I'm from Timor-Leste. We just restored our independence in 2002. And Timor-Leste is a young country that next week will officially be part of Asia. So, about my civic interest, I'm really passionate about public health and also improving access to healthcare for my community. That's the reason since the beginning, I'm entering my general medicine school. I do a lot of work with my community to give access for them for healthcare. And also, I believe that through collaboration and education, we can make healthcare more accessible for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Salamat Bagi, salam sejahtera. Good morning, honorable councils, ladies and gentlemen. Greeting from a country of diversity, a country of thousands of island, and the land of volcanoes, Indonesia. So, my name is Ramatushiva. Finally, a student majoring in international business and economics at Shaqola University, Indonesia. And I'm so honored to present my community here as a young leader under the YSL academic fellowship program within the placement at the University of Nebraska in the beautiful city of Omaha. As Indonesian citizen, we hold the principle called Binika Tungalika, which means united in diversity. We believe the power of diversity can bring harmony, innovation, and progress when people work together with respect and understanding. As my civic interest lies on community-based tourism and micro, small, and medium enterprise sector's development, for the past three years, I've been working under the Ministry of Tourism and Creative Economy in Indonesia in Central Asia region as a youth representation and tourism ambassador, which I hold a responsibility to become a bridge between our local government and indigenous people to expand our tourism potential and create financial well-being for our communities. I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you for YSL and beautiful people of Omaha for this wonderful opportunity and experience. Omaha is truly in my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
When you're 74 years old and you've been hosting international visitors for 23 years, you get asked a lot why you're still doing what you're doing. You just heard 23 excellent reasons why. Thank you again, Douglas County Commissioners, for feeling, making us feel so welcome again today.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Appreciate all of you coming. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Dr. McPherson. A, you don't look your age, and B, thank you for this great contribution to our community and the opportunity to meet so many bright and accomplished young leaders from Southeast Asia. I must say, I am very, very impressed with your language skills. If nothing else, you have excellent communication skills. And I'll remember many of the things that you said here today. It's remarkable to us. We are envious because I don't know we could take 23 of our young political leaders to your homelands and have them speak as eloquently in your language as you have here today. So, thank you very much for that. The sentiments expressed, believe me, are appreciated. We are glad to have you here. We are celebrating our 250th anniversary next year as a republic. And it's a form of government that's not perfect, but it seems to be one that adapts itself to allow for the progress of humanity. When we started out, we had slaves. When we started out, women weren't allowed to vote or hold office. When we started out, you had to have property in order to vote. And we have come a long way since then. It's not perfect here today and we struggle still. But the thing about it is, it seems to be the best form that we've been able to see on earth so far. And so, it's encouraging to hear you talk about the progress made in your homes along the same lines to enhance the ability of all humans to live free and get the basics that everybody needs, a good place to live, care for our elderly, education for our children, jobs for everybody to help it all happen, and a care for our mother earth, our environment. So, thanks for being here today. We really appreciate it. And good luck in your future endeavors.
All right. Thank you again. With that, we're going to go to our second presentation here today, which is a presentation by the Omni Eventive Care on the findings related to LB1412, a report on community violence. And I think they're ready to go.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'd like to also recognize first Dr. Chris Tevis and Lisa Benner behind me. They were both very, very instrumental in data analysis, design, and writing the final report, which I believe all of you should have. It's an 81-page report. And so, we'll just skip to some of the basics here. This initiative was made possible by Senator Justin Wayne. Some months ago, he came and said that he thought that he had a problem in North Omaha with many citizens suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder, but there was no empirical reality supporting that feeling. So, during the summer of 2025 pursuant to the passing of 1412 and a contract with Region 6 Behavioral Health, we began a process in North Omaha to determine the extent of post-traumatic stress disorder. We had quasi-focus group meetings and also we used a couple of evidence-based assessment instruments to determine the extent of the community violence and also the response of the citizenry, both adults and children, to that violence. I want just to let everybody know that post-traumatic stress disorder is a mental health disorder that has severe and disabling clinical course. And it represents a considerable burden to citizens of the community, larger society, and the healthcare system. It's important to note that post-traumatic stress disorder is the only psychological disorder which requires the occurrence of an external traumatic event prior to symptom presentation. The recent research across the country on the exposure to community violence is a significant public health problem associated with elevated rates of trauma and post-traumatic stress. In United States civilian population, lifetime post-traumatic stress disorder is estimated to be between 6 and 8%, depending on a study. And I found one study that was 3%. Adult, and I would like you to just keep that in mind as we go through some of the most important data. Adult respondents in the target area described a widespread gun violence, mistrust of police, systemic inequalities, which lead to their common understanding of trauma. Youth respondents reported both fear and security based upon gun presence, but also a mistrust of police or in general law enforcement, and the gang task force, also poverty, lack of connection between neighbors, lack of opportunity, a gang culture, and social media being a serious issue. 21% of all respondents reported being raped or molested. 10.6% of the respondents reported witnessing someone else being sexually assaulted, molested, or raped. It should be noted that no respondent in the pilot area identified a parent as the perpetrator. 61% of the respondents reported being hit by somebody else or beaten up. being hit by somebody else or beaten up. 60.9% of the respondents reported being involved in a serious accident where someone else could have been severely injured or killed. 55% reported being threatened with serious harm by another person. 54% of the respondents reported being arrested at some point in their life. 71% indicated that they had witnessed someone else being arrested. 28% of the respondents reported being home when someone broke in or attempted forced entry into their home. 26% of the respondents reported seeing a dead person in the community in the street, excluding wakes and funerals, and more than 50% knew that person. 25% reported having been shot or shot at. 29% seeing someone else being shot. 12% witnessing someone being killed by another person. You have a graph on the second page which basically summarizes the violence. In summary, the participants described a very, very heavy burden of violence, especially gun violence, sexual assault, family and domestic anxiety, loss of a loved one, and systemic issues like poverty, crime, incarceration, unsafe housing. Many accounts highlighted both personal victimization and witnessing. In the community evaluation, the survey of exposure to community violence, which is a evidence-based assessment, was used. We also used a post-traumatic stress disorder checklist. It's a 20-item self-report measure on the severity of symptoms. According to the National Center of Post-Traumatic Stress, a total score, a score can go from zero to 80 with a cutoff of 31. Approximately 20% of respondents scored at or above the clinical threshold of 31, indicating that the symptom levels were consistent with probable post-traumatic stress disorder. When examined by group, 17.5% of the adults and 24% of youth met the clinical threshold of post-traumatic stress, 1 in 4 children. This strongly indicates the need for mental health services to be available to both adults and children. However, based upon the type of violence experienced, the mental health assistance needs to be specific to the person and community. We used a program called SSET, which can be adapted very easily to non-licensed clinicians to provide mental health care to the community, which there's just not enough support and services to that community at all. All the youth who participated in the SSET program reported experiencing at least one traumatic event as identified in the program survey A, but they, it was reduced after a very short period of time in the program. So, it demonstrates a very nice finding that this is a possible solution for the, for that community. There are just a number of issues that the report brings forth for you folks to consider, but the recommendations, I think, are pretty clear. Expanding the use of the survey of the exposure to community violence across North Omaha community would give Region 6 and mental health providers in various community service providers a more granular appreciation of post-traumatic stress. North Omaha is not a homogeneous group of people. There are differences between neighborhoods, zip codes, and we found that it was pretty, pretty clear. As stated previously in the report, the prevalence of post-traumatic stress in the pilot area is no less than 300% greater than what one would expect in research in the general population. In fact, the pilot area prevalence is similar to what you would expect in an active war zone, both in terms of impact on citizens and combatants within the theater of conflict. The common everyday understanding from the totality of comments leads any critical person to conclude that community violence tends to destabilize government functions and community relationships and promotes citizen insecurity about their community and government. The challenge includes building and understanding that any concerted response to addressing this must be political, socioeconomic, psychological, and moral and policing. It is clear from the comments that these areas are very central to each participant's reality. It requires a combination of political, psychological, moral information, economic, social, and police activity. The gang problem was identified but not sufficiently described for an adequate understanding, which could lead to a concerted community-level intervention beyond that of law enforcement. According to the United States War College, gangs and their community impact are best understood as three types. Since the gang problem has existed in Omaha for many decades, a full analysis of the relative contribution of each type should be conducted. First-generation gangs, regardless of what they're called, are traditional street gangs, turf-oriented, loose, unsophisticated leadership, and primarily opportunistic. Second-generation gangs are organized for business and commercial gain. Members tend to be focused on drug trafficking and market protection. Third-generation gangs expand their geographic area and are seasoned organizations with ambitious political and economic agendas. From comments provided from participants, it's very possible that all three types of gangs are active in North Omaha. And finally, based upon these findings, it is strongly suggested that all funders conduct comprehensive evaluations of the organizations that receive public support. Our evidence suggests that many of the current services are structured more to sustain the provider's operation than to address the actual needs and priorities identified by community members. I thank you for the opportunity, and Dr. Tevis and I will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Ray, for being here and for the presentation. We'll get to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this. I think you indicated in the introduction that pursuant to LB 1412 and a contract with Region 6 Behavioral Health, I should know, but I don't, what did 1412 do?
It's a big bill. And 14, the section in 1412 that we responded to was Senator Wayne's concern that North Omaha was experiencing a great deal of post-traumatic stress disorder, but weren't sure. And so, that bill allowed for a comprehensive assessment to be done in North Omaha. So, that's basically what it did.
So, was money appropriated for that purpose?
Oh, yes. In the 81-page report that we provided for you, there was almost $500,000.
And did you provide that report to us?
Yes, sir, I did.
This is chilling in its summary in light of the fact that I think we all have children in the community and probably have never experienced, certainly at the levels that we're talking about, some of these things, seeing people killed, subjected to violence, rape. It's another world from where most of our children come from in this community. And we try to dig down on this because it's sad that our youth center contains 70 to 90 kids just regularly. It's appalling that 80% of those are children of color. And when you go into, you know, your findings here, what you see, you know, the mention of, these are stress levels, PTSD levels, consistent with a war zone. You know, obviously, what we have been attempting is not working. And I note in your final conclusion, it strongly suggested that all funders conduct comprehensive evaluations of the organizations they support. Evidence suggests that many current services are structured more to sustain provider operations than to address the actual needs and priorities identified by community members. I suspected that for a long time. And, you know, when we're dealing with this finite number of children, the contacts that they have with individuals who at least are charged to help them, it's imperfect. And how we put a child with another member of the community that possibly could help them is the real where the rubber meets the road question here. We have lots of studies. We have lots of advice. We don't have enough people who are actually interacting with the children that we're talking about. And if it's PTSD, and that seems to be kind of your laser focus here, what would be the ideal thing that we could put that PTSD child affected, PTSD-affected child? What was the best service or person that we could put that individual child with, in your opinion?
That's a very difficult question. Obviously, it's a million-dollar question, right? And we, one of the things that I, it's in the larger report, but not in this report, is that parents of these children do not recognize that their children are actually showing symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder. In other words, these adults, for whatever reason, I have a suspicion that they're adapting. They're adapting to the daily violence. And so, they don't see the effect it's having on the new generation coming up. This is a, I don't know how many, I, I've been here since 1978, and there's been a violent area in North Omaha since I've been here, and I used to live in North Omaha. This is multi-generational across decades. First thing I would do is, this has to be discussed. At every corner of the city and state, this has to be discussed. I was, I've been a researcher for, you know, a couple decades. This was appalling to me. I was astonished by the level of, of violence and the effectiveness in North Omaha. I knew that there was violence in North Omaha. Never in my wildest imagination did I think that it was this severe. This needs to be discussed. Education, obviously, right, for everybody, and, and then recognizing, I, I sent the report to the juvenile bench, and I said, you know, I've, I've worked with the juvenile court for years, and I said, and I, in my, in my little cover letter, I said to the court, all the judges, I said, "When you receive a child out of North Omaha, you might suspect a serious mental illness before they even walk in your room. And then you have to use that lens when you decide what to do." Not just that they're a, a gang-banging kid or, you know, coming from an area where... We found out that there are, there are several abandoned houses where teenagers are living by themselves because they have no place to live. And people think that's awful. It is awful. But what's more disturbing to me, they don't know how to cook. They don't have food. So, what do they do? They wait until dark and go down to the quick shop and steal chips and beer. And half of them get caught. This is, this is something that really needs to be discussed.
Thank you, Dr. Ray. Let me get some other commissioners in here. I'm going to go to, oh, and before we go to Commissioner Rogers, I think, could we get your name, your full name for the record, real quick?
Yeah. Dr. William Ray, President and CEO of Omni Behavioral Health. Office address is 5115 F Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Commissioner Rogers?
Let me, before I go into it, let me, let me pick up on a, on a little bit of something that was said, because with what you just said kind of confirmed what I was going to say in regards to, I, I want to be careful in with saying that stuff, programs are not working. And I mean, saying they're not working in respects to, I don't know if they knew any better. You were doing what you thought was there. And I, and I can tell you right now, I probably had this growing up and didn't even know it. And, and I, and I'm not from here. I'm from East St. Louis, Illinois. The city's like 99.9% black. And every kid that grew up in that setting probably had it, but we didn't know it. And the basic thing was, you true grit through it, and you have situations all the time reading through this. So, I, I just wanted to pick up on your point to say that there's a profile of a neighborhood that you can pop down in any place in the country, and, and this thing probably comes with it. But the first, a couple of questions I want to ask you first is, tell me, in reading through this, because I got this report and I didn't know it was for me, I, somebody had to tell me that this was sent on purpose, and then I read it. So, is it, did this, did this just come to us? Did it go like to the city council, the school board, people like that?
Yes, sir. We, by contract, we were required to send it to Region 6. We were also required to send it to the state of Nebraska, Department of Behavioral Health. We also sent it to the city council.
Okay. I got you. For, for sake of time.
Nebraska Supreme Court as well.
Okay. Now, I want to, I got you for sake of time. Let me ask you. So, the, the, in reading through it, who, who developed the survey of exposure for violence? That's not a Region 6 product?
No, sir. Chris?
It's a standardized assessment that's nationally used across the...
Ms., could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Oh, my name?
Yes, please.
I'm Dr. Chris Tevis, T-E-V-I-S. I'm also with Omni.
Thank you.
So, it's a, it's a nationally utilized survey that researchers have used for a number of years. So, they've used it in other cities.
So, when, when this report, when you all did this thing over the summer, that was the first time it's been used here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let me ask you then, explain to, explain to me what you mean. I think I know, but explain to me what you mean. The gang problem was identified but not sufficiently described for an adequate understanding, which could lead to a concerted community-level intervention effort beyond the use of law enforcement. What's beyond the use of law enforcement?
The, what we concluded from the comments from people was that the community response to the gang issue, which some people said was, you know, street gangs, other people said it was people selling drugs, other people said that some folks are involved with the cartel, the only response to that problem, that three-pronged problem, was law enforcement only. There wasn't anything else.
Say that, say that part again. I didn't hear it.
There wasn't any, there wasn't any other intervention. So, there wasn't any...
No other intervention except police?
Police, right.
All right. I'll wait till next time.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. We'll go to Commissioner Fahy.
Thank you. So, following up actually on a couple of Commissioner Rogers questions. First off, thank you all for the time. Obviously, this has been a, there's been a great deal of work put into this, and it's very helpful for us. So, I appreciate it. I, I didn't catch the answer to the question. Who, who authored this? Where was the, the survey of exposure to community violence developed, or who authored it?
Who was it?
Well...
It's a, it's a research instrument.
Right. I, I'm just curious, and maybe it's in the full report. I, I...
It's in the full report in the, in the reference section.
Okay, perfect.
Who the authors are, who the research authors are, where you can find it in the literature, if you want to examine it further.
Ultimately, the decision to use it in this context was yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we know, and, and again, this, and I apologize again if some of these questions are in the full report. I will review it. I only got about 23 hours ago. What have other cities, presumably other cities have used, have, it's been applied... What have other cities, presumably other cities have used, have, it's been applied to other communities by similar organizations to yourselves? Do we know of any source where they aggregate that data, or we can compare it?
You're, you're talking about the survey.
SECV results from other communities.
I'm sure it's been used, it was normed on some community at some point. I don't have those at the top of my head.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have those on the top of my head, we can get them to you, but one of the reasons we selected that instrument is because of its widespread use.
Sure.
So it's been nationally used, and in places like Atlanta, in California, and the other places that are larger than, than the Omaha community.
Thank you. Going back to page four, the final, your final paragraph, really the last sentence, when we talk about the evidence suggesting that there's problems with current services, I guess I have two, two questions. Number one, we say evidence suggests, is that evidence in the full report?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, when we say a full, a comprehensive evaluation, so going back to the penultimate sentence, a comprehensive evaluation, are you talking about evaluating those providers for their ability to respond to community trauma? Their efficacy in doing that?
That's a piece.
Okay.
The other piece is, I'm, I'm, it was not clear to any of us when we got done that, there's a lot of services in North Omaha.
Right.
And if you talk to the providers, they'll say, "What do you do?" Well, we're a mentor program. Well, what is your outcome? What do you want? There was no true articulation of the endpoint. In other words, well, we want kids to go to school. You want kids to go to school for what purpose? To sit there, to engage, to get better grades? Are those grades then related to a better future? In other words, there, there didn't seem to be any real meaningful integration of those services and their outcomes.
And, and the reason I'm, I'm asking is because, you know, obviously, this is a, you provided us with a tremendous resource, lots of information we didn't previously have, and I'm grateful for that. So when I, when I look in your recommendation section, and you say, "We need a comprehensive evaluation," what I, what I want to know, I think what I'm interested in, is your recommendations for evaluating community trauma and addressing that. Because of course, we have a panoply of providers and services in North Omaha, but that's, that's not possibly on their radar at all. We could say that all of them have an overarching purpose to include, you know, improve the quality of life for residents of North Omaha, but I think if you, as, as evaluators of community trauma, that's how I want to focus those recommendations, and I want to know that we're, we're doing our evaluations, or I want to take any recommendations we might have to assess how we can better work with those providers to address community trauma.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Friend.
Commissioner Friend, yep. I thought you changed your name for a minute. Dr. Ray, I, I was going through, as you read it, and I was digging a little deeper, I know, thank you for the information, and thank you for all the work that you did here. And like, like my fellow commissioners, and a lot of people that have sat in the legislature, and a lot of people that have worked at the executive level, a lot of people in the city council, police departments, 501(c)(3)'s, a lot of folks have been working on this for an awful long time, and it, and it gets frustrating, right? One of the frustrations I have, or I don't know if it's a frustration, there's a variety of ways to describe, there's a variety of ways to describe a broken home. And, and there's, I'm sure there's volumes of scholarship that pinpoints definitions and what those relationships, the relationship those definitions have on some of the results that are provided. Were any of the metrics, were any of the metrics that were tracked here, the notable violence findings, were any of those metrics boomeranged back onto the idea that a 15-year-old, or a 12-year-old, or an eight-year-old is out on their own, and there is nobody actually providing that type of oversight? Are those metrics tracked on a pretty consistent basis? Because, no offense, I don't see that here. So in other words, how many broken, and again, taking the definitions that people create, and the scholarships that they, and the scholarship that they generate from that, how's it tracked? And what type of impact are we realizing from that? So I can only imagine if my 12-year-old didn't have me around, the type of problems that would have resulted. Now, he still causes problems, but he's 29 years old, and it's not my issue. So you see where I'm going here. I, I've been struggling this with, for 30 years, and I, and I can't get my hands wrapped around it. Services aside, I can't get my hands wrapped around it. I don't know if I am going to get a grade, I, I just, I just want to know if 1412 generated some of that data.
We have that, some of that data. We, we were specifically required to report certain elements from 1412 by contract with Region Six. That's what we responded to. We wanted to make sure that we were able to respond to what was required by contract. We took a lot of data, and we have a lot of data that addresses some of those issues, those questions that you raised, right? We just haven't reported on it.
Good info. Somebody told me a long time ago, and I'm not sure I buy into it, but, and it's, and it's probably overly simplistic. I can imagine at some point, again, overly simplistic, somebody grabbing a gang because they don't necessarily have that type of structure. All human beings look for a certain type of structure, whether we think that we're loners or not, we look for that. And maybe they can create that. I, I don't know. I'm not an expert on it. I just, I'm wondering if those questions revolve around the idea of, well, there's nobody else there, so I grabbed these guys because I got, whether they use the term "structure" or not, they got that type of information gathered, and they said, check mark, check mark, check mark. I don't know. So it is frustrating, though. And thank you for all the work you've been doing.
Thank you. We're going to go to a second round for Commissioner Kavanaugh, and then Rogers.
I look forward to reading this report. I have a chance. But I will. And I share your concern for, and we've had this discussion here, for the lack of metrics of success. Okay? So we spend millions and millions and millions of dollars, probably since I was a child, billions of dollars have been spent specifically in the 68111 ZIP code, on the, you know, battle to bring it out of poverty and crime, and all the things that, you know, we see, that contribute to bad outcomes for kids. No, no great surprise. These gangs that you mentioned, these multi-generational gangs, same. I grew up here, and there are multi, I've represented individuals in those situations as an attorney. Absolutely. And the billions of public dollars spent don't seem to have metrics for positive incomes. It hasn't improved, by and large. Our jail population for kids hasn't improved, by and large. And the programming dollars have gone way, way, way up. So when they come before us, I try to get metrics, and say, "When you come back in a year, could you show us a metric that, we had 500 kids, and, you know, 200 of them, something positive happened?" No, not so much. So I think that's a very salient point, and the gang thing plays into that because it's a symptom of the poverty in the area. Poverty and racism at the base of this thing. And the poverty and racism have not been positively impacted by this massive multi-generational investment of public funds. The money's gone someplace, but it hasn't really gone to the people that are impacted here. That's a great point. One thing that bothers me is we get a lot of reports, and, you know, I'm not criticizing you, it's good, good to have this discussion, that say, "Here are the symptoms. Bad, 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 bad." Well, you know, they've been bad since I was a teenager. And mix and match, terms change, you know, scientific metrics change. I'm, I'm interested in reading the report because I took sociology back in the day, and this strikes me as sociologically-based surveys that we used to do way, way back then. And I bet you they would have probably shown the same stuff. The symptoms are clear to anybody with eyes. What are the solutions? Here's my question. Is there someplace in the country where there is something working better than what we do here? Because I'm not satisfied with the level of success of the millions and millions that we spend every year. Is there someplace else?
Well, it depends on what you, you know, how you want to spell success.
Lower crime levels, lower incarceration levels, higher graduation levels, better jobs, housing, family, incomes.
I can speak to one that we look at, because we figured it, whether somebody was going to ask us what those recommendations should be. And we don't want to be too presumptuous in that, in that issue either. Everybody's got an opinion on this. In the Bay Area, there's a, there's a process of, they wanted to reduce gun violence. And so there's a pilot program out, and very, very provocative pilot program, by the way, out in the Bay Area to reduce gun violence. That's one.
You mean Oakland, San Francisco?
Right, yes.
Yes, sir.
So again, I mean, if you, if you look at the, I mean, there's, there's so many issues to be addressed, that, and you do one, you're going to affect another. You're going to push, it's like a water balloon, you know, you squeeze it, and it pops out somewhere else. There needs to be a comprehensive approach to it. People say that, well, the services are fragmented, so you need to coordinate the services. But the problem was, if the services are ineffective, all you're doing is coordinating ineffective services. It's, you're not going to improve the outcomes. Now, you, you may spend more money in coordinating those services that don't produce outcomes, and then you're going to be frustrated again, right? So I think sometime, I, you know, I'm an old, I'm an old guy. I've been around a long time, right? And I've seen the same as you've seen. And I've gone to school for metrics and methodology. And there are both proximal and distal outcomes that you can design. But it takes time. It bring, you have to bring the people together. We brought gang members together, and parents of, of, of children who've lost their lives, and parents who, their kids were the shooters. We brought them together to ask them, what needs to happen? If you had a magic wand, what would happen? They looked at one another, and they were unsure. So sitting in a room saying, "This is what we're going to do," is not going to work. It's just not going to work.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me tell you, I thought, to your point, I think everybody needs to back off this a little bit, and, because they say they got more information.
Yes, sir.
You know, I just don't like the feeling that I'm getting right now, and I, and I don't have this feeling, I mean, I'm having to get myself together, just because I know we're trying to get at answers, but this feels like you're trying to get at, you know, an agenda. And I'm going to tell you, this is not a single-family household issue. I grew up in a two-family household, with grandparents, everything around me. And, and I first heard about this from John Janetta, and he talked about ACES in a meeting we were in a couple of years ago, and you all just codified this. But I think all of this that we're saying, trying to get a grip on it the traditional way, if you got some other stuff, you, we can't even begin to get into this today. Like I said, I can remember a specific example. When I was in a certain grade, and gangs first came down East St. Louis from Chicago, and we were walking from a football game that was traditionally safe. And then some kid's hat got snatched, and we all like, okay, getting ourselves in a mindset of, now we got to fight. And we, they got to fight for ourselves, because if you're associated with this kid, now you got to fight because you're with the kid, or you can't come back in the setting. Now, that's probably in a whole lot of other things, but I can remember specifically, whenever we went in this area now, looking over shoulders, wondering what was going to happen, and it happens in every setting. I don't know what the answer is, but I do know this kind of feel, where we're trying to peel in, and thinking it's a, a single-parent household, thinking that, you know, these programs maybe haven't worked. The programs have had stuff in them, but I tell every program provider now, if you don't have an element of mental or behavioral health in your program, it, it's not, it's incomplete. Because I even think from reading this and looking through it, you can have the program, and you can be good for a minute, until you go back out into the setting, and you don't have all of this wrapped around you again. Now, I don't know psychol, I don't know from a doctoral philosophy point how to explain it all, but I can explain it through life situations. And I knew this was a problem about 10, 15 years ago, when I heard it, and when I saw the report. My first step was wondering what we're going to do about it. I guess the, to try to get at this point, when you're saying you gave it to everybody, I would say, we need to find a way to reaffirm this with some people, because I was at a, a social setting with the superintendent, and I asked him about it, and this is OPS' superintendent, and he hadn't seen it. So if it's supposed to get to people, it needs to get in some hands. I don't know how you do this, I would like you all to come to the, to the Board of Health and present it, because it really feels like a population health problem. It feels like a problem that I kind of talked about with the group a while ago, that really, it feels like you need to get the chief of police and the health director on a podium, and talk about this together, and quit talking about it separated. But the, the main thing that, you know, I'm, I'm just feeling from these comments is, we're hearing this and trying to put it into these boxes, like, single-family home, know this and that. And you come from a perfectly two-family structured home and have this, and I'm telling And I just don't know how to get at it, but I, but I just felt like that need to be, it need to be getting out of this pigeonhole and put into the traditional thing. You can be good to go and have this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on this item from board or public? Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Whatever happened to time limits? Anyway, I've been coming to these meetings for quite a few years, back to when juvenile justice was the hot autumn of the day, and the Sherwood Foundation programs, the youth center began, the Sunshine Project, you might remember some of that, Mr. Kavanaugh. And I've yet to see any programs that have worked, have worked. I'm getting driven out by high property taxes for programs that don't work. How about stopping some of those programs? Reviewing. You get all these ideas from nonprofits, some of them outside of this county, outside of this city, that aren't necessarily correct. I have a bachelor's science degree, 10 hours of statistics from, and guess what? UNO. The first thing we learned was statistics are nothing but lies and damn lies. You can use them to paint whatever picture you want to paint, just like you folks can use lawfare to paint whatever picture you want to paint, of whatever you did or might be doing. The big picture of the citizens do not believe you anymore. This presentation went way beyond the rules, as I understand, for time limits or whatever, and the discussions also. No interruptions, but people like me get interrupted. Do you see a lot of citizens down here today? Have you seen any, a lot of those citizens? Have you seen and heard any that said the programs work? No. Very few. In fact, I think there's probably only one or two at the most, besides me. Most of us don't care because it doesn't matter. It's time to make it matter, and examine why the programs don't work, as Mr. Kavanaugh brings up most. Why are you driving me out of Omaha with high taxes for something that doesn't work? Say no once in a while. Ask people like this, "Well, excuse me, your statistics are based on 400 and some interviews?" Well, just because the cake sold 470 pieces downstairs doesn't mean it's the best cake in the city, does it? That's what statistics do for you. We listed a lot of cream on the top of the cake today, but most of it was putting us to... But most of it was putting us to sleep. And most of it is totally out of whack with real facts based on only 442 pieces of cake. That's not necessarily good for Omaha or Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Teri Crawford. I am second vice president of the NAACP. I am also vice president of the Board of Malcolm X Memorial Foundation. I also teach at the University of Nebraska at Omaha in criminal justice, criminology, political science, and black studies. I wrote a program on trauma-informed support for the women at York. And I taught that class prior to COVID for consecutive 12 weeks in two rotations. So all of this is very important to me. The reason why we chose trauma-informed because of everything that's been said in the report that was presented today. This is not new information. We know about this. We've known for decades that trauma-informed support is what's needed to address all of these issues that have come out today. My question is, and I guess it's not a question, for the trauma-informed support services that was provided at York, the program that I wrote, the only issue with that is we did it on the back end. We should have been addressing that on the front end before they landed at York. A lot of that goes to the services and the oversaturation of these organizations that exist in North and Northeast Omaha. And not just North and Northeast Omaha, but if you go to any urban area, the way Mr. Rogers have described, you're going to find the very same type of organizations. So I am committed to trauma-informed services. I also represent some of these young people because I am a practicing attorney. All of that gives me, I believe, a holistic bird's eye view of what needs to happen in these communities. And we simply are not doing it. I think we know what to do. I think we know how to do it. We simply are not doing it. You mentioned in your report, and thank you so much for that report, that a lot of this goes to top-heavy fees and other things for some of these organizations. You can see that in their annual reports and others. And we cannot track exactly what those success rates have been for some of these children because frankly, there is none. I would love to be able to have a community conversation and not just with the families because a lot of these families don't know what they need. They don't know what they need because they have not been shown what they need. But there is a way to involve all of the stakeholders, all of the researchers. And we can bring researchers from not just locally, but across the country. Dr. Kavanaugh, who is, Antoinette Kavanaugh, who is out of Cook County, I believe. Years ago, she came to the Bar Association to talk exactly about this. And I want to say it's been maybe 20 years now when she came to the Bar Association, to have conversations about trauma-informed support as to how we address juvenile justice. That was 20 years ago. So we're having these same conversations, very important conversations. But like I said, I believe we know how to resolve this, or at least how to address it. And for some reason, we are ignoring that. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to go to a third two-minute round for Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, there was a metaphor that we used in a recent, did a study a couple of years ago in respect. And now I'm have to research that back because it was, it was the exact point here. And basically, it talked about a, a neighborhood. And it talked about if you had an issue at one or two houses, okay, maybe it was just those two houses. But it mentioned something that's, it, it gave the metaphor to some degree that if you had a situation that was spreading throughout the whole neighborhood, it, it may have been something that was in the water and it was spreading through. And, and I got to find this example because it was excellent. But the, the, the piece I wanted to respond to is that, you know, the example that was given up here in respects to even putting this discussion on par with property taxes is a discussion that shows the lack of understanding about this piece. Because right now, we are seeing this lived out in real life in South Omaha. And there is going to be a traumatic effect that happens because of everything that's happened there with children and families because of this. This is just the example that's been happening in this community. There may be other communities where this is there. So this is not something where we keep trying to put it in the traditional, it has poverty elements. It has some racism elements. But like I said, you come from a two-family household and have this. And just made that fact, I think we all need to, from this, come into this with a deeper understanding of trying to see what they have. Because there's a couple of more digs than this just on the surface. I mean, originally, my questions on this were going to be in respects to trying to get an understanding of the study because it almost felt like it was a pitch for that survey. But the comments today just lead me to say that there's a grade two that's going to have to be done on this. Hopefully, it can get done and that this is, this is a whole lot touchier than we think right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanagh, do you want a third two-minute round?
Yeah. And again, thanks for this. I, I, I think you really hit the nail on the head. Some of your findings here are right on point. And Doctor, thank you for being here. I, I totally agree with some of your conclusions as well. Trauma-informed services was the mantra used by the proponents of the kids jail that sits empty across the street. $40 million of monies that we've put up to help children went into that empty building. Not one penny has helped one child. If you want to look at this appropriately, check the waste. $40 million just in the last couple of years went into that across the street. There was a massive, years-long public discussion of this. I fought this tooth and nail. If you hadn't heard about it, you weren't paying attention because $40 million was just wasted across the street. And they said, this is all going to be trauma-informed for our children. Hasn't helped a single child. Helped some contractors, you know, helped some people who are poor at concrete, helped some people who like to put up buildings. The building's empty. If we waste $40 million in this community, and that's tip of the iceberg, you know, we got a big problem. And the problem is identified as, show me how that $40 million helped a single child in Omaha, Nebraska, Douglas County. It didn't. It was waste. And if we don't hold people responsible for the waste of our precious resources, then nothing is going to happen. It'll just go on and on and on and on and on. So the discussion, which you appropriately say, which has been going on, needs to go on. And people need to know we're wasting loads of money that doesn't help a single child. And it's under the rubric of, we're doing trauma-informed stuff for kids. No, you're not. You're doing construction contracts for yourself.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from board or public on this matter? If not, we want to thank Dr. Ray and team for coming today to present. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to move forward on our agenda to Section 7, Public Hearings. We have one. Item A, Public Hearing to Consider a Proposed Golf Car Ordinance to Allow Golf Cars to Be Driven Within SID 578 Westbury Creek in Douglas County. I will now open the public hearing for this item. Is there anybody from the board or the public that wanted to comment on this item? If not, I will now close the public hearing. Just as a reminder to the board, if we want to take action today, we first need to waive the three hearings required by statute and then actually vote on the ordinance in a second motion.
Mr. Chair, there, in order to, Danish Douglas County Clerk, in order to waive the requirement, there needs to be three-fourths of the board present. That's not possible today. So we'd have to...
Lay it over?
Well, we could do the first reading today and then, I think next week, or not next week, the next meeting on the 28th, we could waive the three requirement reading then. And then vote on the ordinance then as well. I mean, obviously, the board could go through with the three-reading process if they'd like. But today, we can't waive the three-reading. We'd have to do that next, next meeting.
Yep. Good reminder. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Since we just have five out of seven today, we can't do that. Supermajority motion. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and do the second one at the next board meeting.
And for the, I, I appreciate the credit, but Teresa Eric was the one that reminded me, so...
She gave you the, 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 okay. Very good. We'll move forward here on our agenda into committees. Under Finance, we have Budget Report as Presented. Under Administrative Services, we have one item. Douglas County Election Commission Office Expansion. I will toss it to Commissioner Rogers for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, the committee had a meeting about two weeks ago to go through this. All the board members were handed some information, well, emailed information in regards to this. Basically, the heart of it is the request to expand the current space to meet the, the needs of the upcoming election based on past performance. There is no, money is encumbered for this to be able to pay for the renovations and the payment of the space for the remaining of the year in this budget. And then the board will have to take it up in next budgets. I think, I think the adequate case was made for this in regards to the need for the expansion. And it basically would be expanding the office to vacant space that is right currently next to it to make it more, to try to reduce voting times from early voters and try to make traffic and everything more available. With that, I, I move approval.
Most to approve by Rogers, second by a friend. Any further discussion on this item?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska. I'd like to take advantage, just make a few comments here. I'm, I'm in favor of this. But the reason I'm in favor of it is because we need more room for the citizens to be able to participate in the process of counting ballots, certifying ballots, and observing our poll workers. The current building there does not allow for any of that because everything's behind closed doors and glass. Well, you have a new president in the organization here now, and he's going to open up the election process thing, discussion about uncertainties in the last elections, probably fraught. So be ready to open it up for discussion at this podium because it does need to get discussed. The people hired you to allow us to challenge our government right here at this podium. And we want to challenge the election process no matter what. Mr. Bryan says. He might be just regurgitating what's been told to him by the Secretary of State, who never has answered any of the questions, legitimate questions about election security by a Mr. Robert Borer, who does have skin in the game because he ran for office twice. He has pursued a lot of the counties and election people across the state and been, been denied information about just about everything. So those things in itself imply that there's some sort of problems with the election process. We, the citizens, own that, not you and not him. We want this discussed openly with questions that you answer back and forth, even if we have to make this body a, a citizen's grand jury on the election process. We've asked for this many times to be on the agenda, and it's always been denied or never answered. Let's get this right. You guys work for us. It's not the other way around. Thank you. Hand counting, certifying participation in each precinct, not behind closed doors out there at that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'm, first of all, not clear what this resolution that we're talking about says. For the point of personal information, could you give us the thing that was just moved and seconded?
Yeah, go ahead.
Come up to give added. But basically, this is a proposal to expand the current space at the Election Commissioner's office. There is, and Brian gave the exact space next door, some space needed there. This is based on data that was showed at the committee meeting in regards to space needs, a need for more staff to handle early voting requests and other matters that happen in regards to that. And the discussion was talked about now, how the election process is becoming more year-round because of ballot, ballot initiatives and other pieces. So at essence, this is a proposal to expand the Election Commissioner's office. The funding for this is...
But it does not commit any dollars?
It, it commits dollars that's encumbered right now. It doesn't commit any num, any dollars that would require any change to the budget. Basically, it would take encumbrance to do the renovation and also pay the remainder of the extra rent now that would become available for the remainder of the year.
Okay. I, I'm still unclear. Could we get a clear articulation of what we're voting on? Do you mean, what does this resolution say? Brian, maybe you could help us here.
I'll try.
Well, if, if, sorry to interrupt with that. I mean, there is, there is not a resolution before in the packet. It's just the Election Commissioner's letter, so...
If you can hit on the dollar amount and the area address being expanded into, that should cover the concrete tangibles we need and where those funds, as Commissioner Rogers was alluding to, would come from.
Sure. So Brian Cruz, Douglas County Election Commissioner, 1222...
Okay, Brian, can I ask you real quick here?
Sure, sure.
It does say cost of funding, a total of $275,000 was encumbered to assist with or cover the build-out costs. An additional $100,000 was encumbered to, to cover fixed election costs. So are we talking about $327,000 there? I'm just trying to be...
Yes.
Specific.
The answer is yes. We, we encumbered that money from the budget last year.
I understand. So if we vote yes for this resolution, we are saying, go ahead and take that $375,000 and do this expansion?
Correct. And pay the additional rent for this year.
Okay. And beyond that, is there a budget for this program going forward?
The budget going forward after this year would be, it's approximately $36,000 a year in additional rent. So beyond this budget year, then we would need the $36,000 added into our budget to pay for this. But for the current year, we don't need anything for rent or...
We just need 375...
Well, we already have it.
I mean, but you need the authority to go ahead with the expenditure of that.
Correct. We need the board's approval and then, of course, it...
And that's what you're asking us for today.
Correct. And then the, the lease would be extended and we'd work with the county attorney's office to ensure that. And we'd also work with public properties on the build-out.
That's great. Are there FTEs contained in this 375,000 additional employees?
No.
Okay.
No. But we do, we do have two permanent staff that don't have offices. So part of the build-out would be offices...
No, but we're not talking about, this is all for the build-out and the acquisition and...
Correct. There's nothing for salaries.
Okay. You know, and I favor giving you that.
Great. Anything, anything else?
Yeah. Let me go to Commissioner Fahy.
Of course.
Commissioner Cruz, thank you very much. Thank you for being here today. I'm happy to support this for you, appreciate the work that you do in your office. Would you just briefly respond to some of the just blatant misstatements that were said by Mr. Store a moment ago, please, regarding the ability to observe ballots and elections? I would, and, you know, he made some blatantly false implications about what the new space would be for, what it'd be available for versus what is currently is or is not available.
Sure. So we do have windows into the counting room right behind... So we do have windows into the counting room right behind the customer service desk. We also have windows on the side where media and observers can observe the counting process. So there is actually a state statute that says observers are appointed by the political parties, and there's one person from each recognized political party that can be an observer. We do allow them to split that up in shifts if they would like, rather than making someone stand there for 12 or 15 hours a day, and we have had those observers. You know, the reason that law was put in place is we do want to be transparent, we do want to have observers, but we also have to maintain quorum and, you know, some semblance of order and be able to do our job as well. There also is a hand recount that is administered by the Secretary of State's office after every statewide election. They randomly choose different races in different precincts. They do that the morning after the election and then let us know, and then we do that hand count from the tally of the machines to make sure everything comes out properly, which it always has. In local elections, we always do that hand count on our own. So we do that for special elections, for city elections, like we're mailing out ballots today for the Valley's special election. And so after the votes are tallied on November 4th, then we will do a random sampling of a hand count on that, again, just to ensure the machines, you know, do tally properly. The space will be used, as I was saying, you know, people ask us, what do you do when there's no elections? There's really no such thing anymore. We had the presidential last year, so we had the presidential primary, then we had six petitions. We had over 350,000 signatures we had to verify in Douglas County alone last summer. And I mean, we were using every space we had, including our customer service spaces up front because we weren't serving the public at that time. Then we had the presidential general. This was kinda supposed to be our off-year. We had a special election for Bennington in February, a special election for Millard in March, city primary in April, city general in May. We had SID elections, 60 to 80 of those in September, and we're mailing out ballots for another special election today in the City of Valley. So you can see, I mean, this is what we need the space for. It's just we're constantly running elections, doing voter registration, things of that nature. And as early voting has become more popular, 50% vote early, the vast majority of that by mail, some in our office, and 50% election day, we need more space to process all of those ballots, just to be frank. I mean, the other big issue that it will help is right now in our office, when we have early voting, we have one entrance in and one entrance out with the double door. And this new space has two additional doors in it. So we will configure things for a much better traffic flow and also for our ADA community. Right now, trying to get someone with a walker or a wheelchair in and out of that door, just to be blunt, it's not fair to anybody. So I know the light was red there. Sorry, I probably went too long.
Let me go to a second round for Commissioner Kavanaugh.
A couple of things that Commissioner Fahy brought up. Our elections are pre-open and accurate currently, right? There's never been any fraud identified in Douglas County elections. Is that correct?
Since I've been there 10 years, and at least in recent times, there's never been a prosecution.
And I've been here a lot longer doing elections, and so there's none. So the allegation of some fraud or something is totally false. Secondly, don't thousands of individual citizens volunteer their time in every precinct, every election to come and serve in the election process?
Absolutely. You know, it takes about 3,000 election workers for a presidential general, and that has to be made up of a party balance, as well as we try and get new folks, folks who've done it a while and folks who've done it a long time. You know, there's anywhere from five to 10 people there. You know, it's out in the open, you're working together. Yes. Yes, the answer's yes.
So, so the idea that people don't have already access to these elections is belied by the simple fact that thousands of people volunteer, regular folks, citizens, voters, to participate in this. And as far as the, oh, we can't see the ballots being counted thing, as the probably lawyer in Nebraska who's sat and watched more recounts than anybody, I can tell you from personal experience, I could watch those, and here's what you watch. If you've ever taken an SAT test or anything, you fill in the blanks, and a ballot is just like that. You fill in the blanks, yes or no, vote for this one or that one. Those are taken and put in a scanner, and you watch the scanner do its job. Now, if there's some question on some ballot, you can actually look at it, the two sides, you know, of the question or the candidate can look at it and determine, and there's professionals from your office who do this as well. So the idea that you can't currently watch, if you have standing, the election happening, that's not right either, right?
That's right. The law allows for it. It's just there's rules and regulations.
Right, right. You know, and I appreciate folks coming down here. We all want the free and fair elections to happen. We're fortunate that it does, and thanks to you, Mr. Cruthers, for running a great office. And thank you for the briefing on this needed expansion. You know, I've said it many times, the elections are the air supply of our republic and democracy, and you provide us with clean air every time. So thank you for this. The lie that we don't have free elections is something that I don't think that we can sit back and just let it be said and not countered. It's not true. We have free and fair elections, correct?
Absolutely, and there's all kinds of processes and procedures in place to ensure that.
And you're a Republican and I'm a Democrat, right?
I think that's probably the way we're registered. I haven't checked lately, but-
Yeah, I think that's right. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fahy, is that another light?
I'll be brief. I do want to thank you for answering the questions, and I do apologize for making you respond to-
Oh, no.
-assertions not really germane to what we're here for on this matter, but, you know, it's probably going to be my practice to, that we'll have to talk through some of the conspiracy theory gobbledygook that gets perpetuated at these meetings, such as that, you know, election fraud occurs, but only when certain people's candidates don't win, but magically the fraud doesn't happen when their candidates do win, that there's a whole cabal of volunteer election observers that are somehow in on the conspiracy, that certain members of the president, that the president is not in on the conspiracy, that the conspiracy's against him, but somehow some of the people within his own party who run state governments that support his agenda are also in on the conspiracy. I know it's all nonsense. I know it's silly to waste our time making you respond to that nonsense, but it's just something we have to do and it's part of the job, so I appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Other comments or questions on this matter? If not, we'll vote. Again, the motion is to approve the expansion proposal as described at the committee hearing and on the document we received as a board today.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. That completes Administrative Services. Now we'll go to Human Resources, where we have the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And since Commissioner Borgson is not here today, I'll take a bit of a lead on items two, three, and four under Human Resources, which appear to be standard annual renewals for human resource slash benefits for employees. So if the board would like, we could take two, three, and four as a block for a motion. Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Question or comment from Commissioner Rogers?
Or was that?
No.
Okay, never mind. Any questions or comments on the HR renewals? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The board does have a need for executive session today for the purposes of litigation and contract negotiation. Before I take that motion, just a quick reminder that the board will be on a brief recess next week on Tuesday, October 21st, and will reconvene on Tuesday, October 28th. So with that, I'll take a motion for exec session. Motion by Fahy, second by Friend.
Commissioner Friend and Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you voting yes? Commissioner Kavanaugh, Mr. Store, we're in the middle of an action right now. Mr. Kavanaugh, are you voting yes?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Push your button, then.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purpose of litigation and contract negotiation.[1304.51]